Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lucy Bisson. I'm the chairperson of the planning board. Welcome to the planning board for December 9th. I would like to ask Amy Smith to call the roll, please.
Sure thing. Roger Dupree.
Here.
Mark Roy.
Here.
Michael Markot.
Present.
Lucy Bisson.
Present.
Alex Fine.
Here.
And Amy Smith.
Here.
Okay. And just for the record, for the city staff, we have John Connor, Director of Planning and Code Enforcement, Shelley Norton, Deputy Director, City Planner, Craig Tebow, City Planner, and Linda Tripp, Administrative Assistant. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I believe you were wanting to take things in a different order.
We were looking at taking Item C, which is the recommendation on the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay first. Yes.
Then the conditional use permit application for new beginnings, second, and then the recommendation on homeless shelters, third.
Correct. Okay. And I see that we do have correspondence. We do have two emails to add to our record. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. In that case, we will start with the public hearings. The planning board sending a recommendation to the city council on ordinance changes to the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District, including changes to Article 11 district regulations. Ms. Norton, could you please let us know what your recommendations are?
Sure. So, on October 21st, the planning board initiated changes to Article 11, Section 24 of the zoning and land use code in support of making changes to the No Name Pond Overlay District. What staff had brought forward at that time was that the way the ordinance is written, the replacement of existing structures or prior structures, for example, that may have burned down, is not allowed the way our staff reads the ordinance. So, the suggestion was that that would be, it seems unfair that people wouldn't be able to replace what they currently had. So, we're looking to have the board change that language. And then, there was the second question, which was whether to allow people to do any expansions within 100 feet of the lake of their existing structures. So, if someone was replacing a structure, could they do a bigger footprint? Or if someone wanted to add an addition? So, we have had some questions in recent months about that. And again, the way we read the ordinance is currently those are not allowed. At the meeting, it was staff's understanding that the board was in favor of allowing replacement of existing or recently demolished structures. I don't know as we had consensus on a direction as far as whether to allow expansions or how much. What we have suggested as a starting point for discussion is using the Shoreland Zoning Standard, which is in Article 12, and basically pointing to that and saying if Shoreland zoning allows an expansion, to allow it. The board could certainly choose to do something different than that suggestion, but that's just kind of what staff has put forward as a starting discussion point. There were some questions at the prior meeting where we discussed this about the existing protections that haven't been put in place for No Name Pond. Some concern among board members as to the water quality report that we had received. You know, there's annual testing done of the water quality. And the report showed, as one would expect, that all of the additional rain that happened last summer caused a lot of additional potential erosion into the lake, potentially affecting lake quality. So, I did speak with our environmental engineer. And so, one way that we could potentially work to improve the water quality would be to require people to put in buffer strips or filter strips for the water that would be produced from the replacement of a structure or addition. One of the largest sources of contamination is septic systems, unfortunately. And that's harder to address a remedy for. So, we don't really have any great suggestions for that. But, that's kind of outlined in the memo. I can go into any of that in more detail if folks would like.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for staff from members of the board? Mr. Markot?
Okay. Listening to that, I thought that the previous workshop, we were a little more defined than what I'm sensing now. So, there's more work to be done? Is that what I'm hearing?
So, when I went back and reviewed the meeting, it was clear to staff that the consensus was that the board wanted to allow people to replace structures they had. It was unclear to me that we had consensus on allowing additions or how big an addition.
So, is tonight a recommendation to council with hard items already?
It will be. If you make a recommendation, we've certainly done it before where you've provided corrections to the ordinance over what staff has done. And we've taken those red lines and brought that to council. So, we would be looking for, before you would make a motion to make a recommendation, we would be looking for it to be clear whether there's any changes to what we've marked up that the board would like to make.
And I know that we've had people in the audience in the past that had a stake in this. Are they aware of what it is that's being recommended tonight? And are they in approval? Is there anybody here for this?
Yeah, I recognize some people from the previous meeting.
Yeah, there are people here who will speak during the public hearing if they want to. I think there were three parties our department was aware of who were emailed this information.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from on the board have any questions for staff? Yes. Ms. Smith?
So, in terms of expanding the footprint, is there, I read through this, there was a lot here. Can they only expand the footprint further away? So, if there's already like a 40-foot, then it has to be added to the back of the property?
Yeah. So, the way Shoreland zoning is written, it can't, I believe it can't increase the non-conformity. So, it would need to either be behind the building or there may be some circumstances where it would be allowed to be in the same line, but it wouldn't be closer to the lake.
Okay. And then, just my other question, just because I've not worked on this kind of thing before, is that if you allowed an expansion of the footprint, would you then need to expand the septic?
That would depend on the capacity of the septic and what they're actually adding. So, if they're adding bedrooms, for example, versus a larger living room. So, that would be, you know, part of the building permit application with code enforcement would be evaluating if the septic design is sufficient for what they propose.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
Can you say in here that changing them over to sewer would be too costly? Does that mean too costly for the city as far as the city's portion of the lines?
Yes.
Or really just a consideration of the cost of their hookup?
So, there wouldn't be sewer lines in a lot of the areas that would have to be extended. There was sewer that was put in, I don't know, 20-plus years for a development in the area. But, there hasn't been kind of any further sewer extension. So, that would be the gold standard for protection of the lake would be to have the effluent treated at the source.
Right. Which is why I'm asking, what does it mean too costly? I mean, other than just dollar costs, right?
Yeah.
An environmental cost?
That's essentially what it would be, is the dollar cost for the city.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? I have a question. So, Shoreland zoning says they can add up to 1,500 square feet or 30% expansion of the existing footprint. So, would, if we make a recommendation for copying, if you wish, Shoreland zoning, would we have to be specific or, and say, yes, we want to allow them to do 1,500 square feet or 30%? Or do we have the choice of doing less? I know we wouldn't be able to go more, but we could do less, correct?
Yes.
I'm just throwing something out.
You could absolutely do something different. So, for simplicity, what staff provided was the suggestion that it would be whatever Shoreland zoning allows, which at this moment in time in the No Name Pond.
Right.
Yeah. It's the 1,500 or 30%, whichever is larger.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to provide a different expansion requirement in that No Name Pond Overlay of, you know, let's say maximum of 20% of the footprint or something like that, you could totally do that instead.
Okay. Also, do we have to specify if we want to, if they increase the size, that they have to add these protections of, you know, drainage and stuff? Or is that also part of the Shoreland zoning?
It's not part of Shoreland zoning right now.
So, that is something that we would have to address specifically?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I'm just trying to get, so that the board knows that we, what we have to say when we're making the recommendation, you know, add to the recommendation. Okay. Yes. Ms. Gox.
Sorry for my tardiness. I apologize. So, I'm mentioning this before we open for public comment, in case this helps inform public comment. But, I would like to see the ability not just to reconstruct within a short timeframe, but also to allow for an expansion within a short timeframe. I'm not comfortable with the whichever is greater. Like, I've had small family camps on ponds before, and you can have like a little 800-square-foot camp, and all of a sudden, you've got a 2,300-square-foot property, the language as it is written. And so, and I feel like when you talked about it last time, and I don't know if it was a different protection or if it was the No Name Pond and not the kind of default Shoreland, but I feel like I remember you talking about a 10% variance and not 30.
I believe we were talking about possible options. So, I think staff was suggesting like maybe something small, like 10%. We gave it as an example.
Okay.
So, the way Shoreland zoning is written right now, because I think there was discussion about, well, maybe we just allow whatever Shoreland zoning allows. The way it's written is the 30% or the 1,500. So, if that, if the board feels that a different amount is preferable, then that would be, we would just need to amend the language that we have here typed up, which is easy to do.
Okay.
If I may.
Yeah.
So, it's 1,500 total feet?
For a total footprint?
Yes.
Yes. It's not in addition to.
Great.
It's 1,500 or 30%, whichever is greater. So, in your example of the 100-square-foot.
It would never get beyond 1,500 square feet.
Correct.
Well, if you started with a 2,000-square-foot, you could do 30%.
30% of that.
So, it could be greater than 1,500.
Okay. Where in the materials you provided us is the kind of like tracked changes edits that show us what we're proposing and working from?
So, we're looking at Article 11, Section 24 Overlay District. And then, the.
It's really largely in F that I saw the.
That's right. The bottom of the page, F. We've added language that says if Article 12, Section 2 Shoreland areas would allow the expansion, alteration, reconstruction, or replacement of the structure, that section will be used to regulate the replacement of illegally non-conforming structure within 100 feet of No Name Pond, notwithstanding the below minimum setback from Shoreline requirements.
So, then when I cross-reference to 12.
So, yes, so we.
Even just the language of if makes me uncomfortable. So, I'm just imagining being somebody in the audience, for example, trying to figure out what my local ordinance allows for me and cross-referencing different sections with language like if. I wonder if there's a way to clean that up some, or if, why is there an if, I guess, would be the better question to ask?
The if is there because Shoreland zoning is, I won't say it's complicated, but when you look at the non-conformance, Section 8, which we provided as a second printout for you in Article 12, there's a section on expansions. There's a separate section on replacement of structures. So, there's different conditions depending upon the different circumstances. So, it's not always straightforward. There's a section on relocation, if you're going to relocate, or if you're just doing foundation work. So, it's better to just refer back to it and say if Shoreland zoning allows it, that we would allow it.
So, that if Shoreland zoning changes, we, our regulations would change with it?
Would match up with that.
Okay.
Or to have a completely different standard, like in that 100-feet-of-No Name Pond, we're only going to allow acts expansion, but we'll allow it regardless. You know, that's, if Shoreland zoning doesn't allow it, then we can't allow it. So, there is kind of a, an overlap there where Shoreland zoning is the state requirement. And so, if it prohibits something, we can't allow it.
So, at the risk of sounding wordsmithy, is it also accurate that the relitened language on the bottom of Appendix A, Article 11, on the first page in F, really could also read where Article 12, Section 2 Shoreland, blah, 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 allows for?
Yes. Absolutely.
Because that's the intent of it. Like, reference to here and where it allows, then you may, instead of, right, if. The choose-your-own-venture feel for people trying to figure out what they can do with the property they own and pay taxes on is what I'm trying to.
This isn't an either-or situation.
Right.
It's like, if it meets the standards, then you can do it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Period.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Anyone else have any, yes, Mr., yes, Roger.
Shelley, do we have a map of what the overlay is for the Shoreland?
We can absolutely pull that up for you, just a moment.
Did you just provide us Article 12 as a reference? Because I don't see any edits.
And while you're doing that, so, the reconstruction and the specifications, the infiltration plan and stuff, that would be number six that's added. So, we would have to reference number six when we're making our recommendation? If we agree with it?
Yeah. Or you could just say, you know, that edits provided tonight with the following changes, you know.
Right. Okay.
Changes you want to.
Just trying to get everything, yeah. Yes. I'm sorry.
Just back to what Shannon was asking about with the 1,500, the 30% or the 1,500. Why is 1,500 even in there?
It's the state number.
The state Shoreland zoning regulation.
Okay. Because it seems like it just confuses the whole issue to me. It's like, 30% is the max.
Almost like it's an arbitrary number?
Yeah.
And also unrelated to the other qualifier, which I think is what Amy's getting at. Like, if it's 30%, it's 30%.
And that's it. You're done.
I mean, it sounds like the goal is to keep, the way I would read it is the intention is to keep small structures from getting any bigger than 1,500 and someone decided at some point that like 1,500 is still a small, you know, camp on a lake.
But if you already have a 2,000-foot structure.
Then.
Go for it.
If you already are the Rockefeller family.
2,600, here we come.
You're on Long Pond or something, then.
So, then how does that, can we change that?
Yes.
The state Shoreland zoning?
Not the state Shoreland zoning, but can our, I mean, you said that we could do smaller.
Yes.
Right? The lesser of these two. Do we have to reference 1,500 at all? Is there a cap? Because I don't understand where the Shoreland zoning is actually creating a footprint cap. It's referencing a footprint, and then it is creating a cap that could be greater than that footprint cap just simply by amending 30%. And so, it's really like if you got a property originally or inherited it that was 1,400 square feet, you only get another 100 feet. But if you had 1,600 square feet, well, then you can add 30%. Is that the intention of the state's language? Is that how I'm understanding?
No.
Oh, help.
No, no. So, if it's.
I understood that if, for example, the existing square footage is 500 square feet, you can go up to 1,500. But if it's, you know, 1,400, you can go up to 20% more than.
30%.
30% more than 1,400, because it's whichever is greater. If I go from 500 to 1,500, I'm going 300% more, right? That's allowable up to 1,500. I can't do any more than that. If I already have 1,400 square feet, I can go up to 30% more, because that's going to bring me beyond 1,500.
Correct.
What it's doing is it's saying if you have a small property, 500 square feet, you're not limited to just 30% expansion. You're limited to 300% expansion.
1,500.
Correct. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah.
It's kind of a funny one.
Yeah. But I think part of my question still stands, though, even understanding it that way.
No, I get, yeah, I agree. I mean, why is 1,500 in there?
Well, when you look at phosphorus and runoff and some of the other considerations in here, we don't actually have a concern with the total impervious area, because we would be okay with 2,600 or 3,400 if achieved through 30% of the original footprint. But we're uncomfortable with a 500-square-foot camp getting to 1,600. Shoot the hole in that logic. Am I understanding it correctly?
Yeah. I believe so.
We don't have to like it, but I'm understanding it correctly.
You're understanding it correctly. We just can't change the 1,500 number to a greater number. That's state.
Yeah. But going back to Mark's question, if you're 1,400 and add 30%, you're over the 1,500 mark.
Correct.
They're allowing that instead of just going to 1,500?
Yeah.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah.
In other words, they can only add 100 square feet?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no. They can add 30% of 1,400, whatever that math.
Because 1,500 is not really a cap.
Whatever is greater is the key part.
1,500 is a cap for extremely small, extremely small camps. That's all it is. It's saying, you're 500 square feet, you can't go beyond 1,500. You can go beyond 30%. You can go, you can go way beyond 30% if you're really small. But if you're big, you can't go beyond 30%. That's all that says.
And I would argue that the 1,500 isn't, like, yes, it's a cap, but it's also not a cap, because it's allowing you to exceed that 30% for various small structures. If anything, it's like allowing you to get much bigger from a percentage basis.
Yeah. I mean, I personally don't understand why it's that, whatever.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I think it's to allow people to turn like little seasonal one-room buildings into year-round buildings. I wouldn't be surprised if that was sort of the motivation there.
Right.
So, for us, just to be clear, because looking at the map here, we have the No Name Pond Overlay and Shoreland zoning, and they intersect perfectly. So, whatever we do under No Name Pond can't be any more permissive than Shoreland zoning. And we can't change Shoreland zoning, because that's state.
Right. Although, we could certainly look and see what the state requirements are under that, because there is a certain amount of customization that communities do. So, we have written into it a different standard for No Name Pond than for other locations in the city. I don't, I don't know exactly what the Chapter 1,000 minimum standard is right now. Staff could definitely look into that, and we could look into tweaking Shoreland zoning if there's an interest in doing that. But today, we can't be more strict than what we have on the books. Or we can't be less strict.
Yeah.
We can be more strict. So, just for pulling up the map, folks were asking, the blue line with the little dots around it is Shoreland zoning around No Name Pond. You can see that the green, which is the No Name Pond Overlay, expands much larger. It's the full watershed. So, really, we're only talking about the portion of the No Name Pond Overlay that's within 100 feet of the lake, which is less than what that blue dashed dotted area is. So, it's, you know, when things are really close to the lake, that doesn't matter.
Michael?
To better understand the math, so, if you had an existing footprint of 1,400, a 30% expansion would be 420 extras. So, that'd be 1,820. That'd be allowable, because it's the larger of, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Are there any properties that are currently 1,500 or more?
I don't have that information for you tonight.
Because when it says this, it's fairly generous in that it allows up to 1,500 square foot or 30% expansion on the existing format, not footprint. There's no information here that suggests, you know, what the largest existing footprint is. And if you had an existing footprint somewhere that was much larger than any of these numbers, it could be 30% more of that.
Yep.
Without knowing if there's anything currently over 1,500 embedded within the overlay.
Yeah. But this already exists, because it's a state regulation.
Well, yeah.
So, we're just trying to conform our regulations to the state.
Well, that would suggest that possibly that there's nothing larger than 1,500 currently. But we don't have information.
No, because this is state, and it's state all over the state, not just for No Name Pond.
Yeah. But there's nothing in here that gives an upward limit?
No.
Well, the upward limit is the 30% of whatever. Yep.
But if it.
And I don't, and I don't know when this was adopted, what the city went through for an exercise.
Well, just to be a devil's advocate, if somebody had a 10,000-square-foot, they could increase it 3,000 feet.
Or, well, wait a second.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what it would work out to.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Is this a one-time expansion, or can it be done over a period of years?
Well, that's a great question.
Yeah. So, the Shoreland zoning ordinance does require that it be registered at the Registry of D. It needs to be a one-time, but it would need to be something that would be kind of.
Monitor.
Monitored, like, when code enforcement gets a request for an expansion, they would need to look for that.
Then it's like compound an interest with a footprint, right?
Right. Sure.
A new bedroom every year.
Yeah.
But in here, it said the footprint as of like 1989, right?
Yeah. So, if it's 89, then, you know, chances are that the footprints were quite small or relatively small out there, I would think. Yes. Shannon?
I'm not actually an environmental scientist. Like, I did not finish that course of programming and switched to economics. But I did a semester or two, and it's not enough to be useful in this conversation. It feels like part of this, in addition to real-life circumstances that have made this conversation more time-sensitive for us of which we're considering it. It seems like the framework within which we're considering it feels like it could be boiled down to two arguments, right? One is specifically based on how do we allow more development? And what's the appropriate amount of development? And how does that, how does that align or reconcile with the goal of keeping this small pond and its community not overly developed, right? And then, there is a second piece around, and how does that, whatever restrictions that we put in, align with the science of ensuring that for the same reasons, the quality of the water remains good, which has been questionable over the years and has a higher likeliness of becoming not-good-quality water, by making sure that both the impervious area and the way that the water is maintained supports the fact that it's going to run into a lake, specifically when you're talking about the way that we clean out some stuff, but not nutrients with septic systems, and that that's part of the problem. Right? And so, I think there's a maybe challenging, but straightforward philosophical conversation around development, scale of development, city services, tax base. But how do, how do we have a conversation tonight that says it should be 20%, not 30? Or it should be 25% and not 30? Or it should be the lesser of, when part of what would drive me in that conversation is supporting the future inhabitants of No Name Pond with having good water quality by ensuring that the development that might fall into whatever we allow today has the appropriate septic systems put in, water management, and that all of that is as far from the lake shore as possible. What do we have to help with that decision tonight?
So, as far as distance from the lake, there's already the requirement that structures be set back 100 feet. So, we're talking about existing non-conformant structures that are closer and whether they can be expanded or whether they can be reconstructed, either because the owner wants to demolish them and rebuild them or because there's been some sort of damage. So, we're talking about existing conditions, essentially. In those cases, Shoreland zoning, if somebody is demolishing something or it's been damaged, it does require them to move back to the greatest extent possible. So, there is a bit of a requirement that there be a review of the site conditions to determine if it can be moved back, you know, with ledge and steep slopes and other conditions that can't always be. So, I guess I would, you know, distance, I guess that's probably less of your purview and more the issue of allowing the replacement, yes or no? And then, do you want to entertain allowing expansions or not at this time? And if you do, do you want to pick something small and modest? Or do you want to just match it up to Shoreland zoning? I would say those are kind of the paths forward.
And I'm good. I feel like I've got a lot of information here, all the way up to that last piece around, yes, we'd love to make a change, and what is the right amount of change? And how does that relate to the science that supports the. And how does that relate to the, the science that supports the whole reason there's an overlay district that goes beyond shoreline in the first place?
Yeah, and it's tricky because you don't, we're not necessarily in the business of regulating what people do with their square footage, right? We're not saying, you can't add more bedrooms, right? We're not limiting what the square footage is. Is it a kitchen expansion, or is it, you know, two bedrooms? That's, hasn't been typically what we've regulated. So I don't have a great answer for how to kind of mitigate sort of the subject side of what an expansion might allow.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, just as a comment, you know, we're trying to use a fairly crude tool, square footage, to be an approximate for how the people are using the building, you know, how many people are in the building. You know, it's sort of like regulating traffic by dictating how many spaces we allow in park, in a garage, right? Like, people can still park on the street. People can have really big cars. People have really small cars. Like, there's a lot of variability here. Do we have any, because we did talk a little bit in the edited document around, and there was, you know, advice from an engineer that the city has on contract of like, well, there's better practices now than when a lot of these structures were built. And that's something that I, I sort of go towards as being, you know, I think, a better guiding light for both the conversation of replacement and for expansion, right? Like, is there a way that we can write this up where it allows for expansion if the applicant can prove that the water will be better managed? You know, the total, you know, total runoff will be less than before the renovation? You know, because I, I think about it in terms of like, oh, I don't know. You expand your house thirty percent, right, but you put a green roof on it, has plants on the roof, and so the runoff drops by half, you know? So you have more quote-unquote "impervious" surface or roof surface, but the actual amount of runoff is significantly less. Or you replace the septic system with, you know, something that's more of a closed system, like a full-on composting system. I don't know, right? You know, and you eliminate that source of runoff. Do we have any of that as a tool in what we can write tonight? Or is that really sort of outside of what we can do here, and we're really limited to just sort of square foot as a requirement?
So certainly looking at infiltration practices or green solutions for water uptake, which is kind of the first part of your discussion, we can definitely do that and get this in line to the end of the septic ordinance that we added to get to that. We, as far as septic design, I'm not sure that we have the technical expertise available tonight in this room to help you out with that.
That's how I'm feeling.
So I think that one thing we could certainly do, this might be going out on a limb, but you could certainly limit them to the number of bedrooms they have. You know, you can do expansions but no more bedrooms. I mean, there's, you could, we could start getting into territory like that, which gets more to the subject issue, so we could explore that.
Yeah, but don't, it, doesn't the permitting process, if they add bedrooms, the, isn't the, isn't the septic system evaluated at that time that it will support or not support more bedrooms or more people in the bedrooms?
It will, and the issue with more effluent is that, you know, the treatment of effluent through a septic system deals with, like, fecaliform bacteria. It's not taking phosphorus.
Right, right, yeah, it doesn't, that doesn't make any difference. Okay, go ahead, Shannon.
Notwithstanding what you just said, which is not lost on me, I guess I'm one, because I don't, I don't feel like, I don't feel like we're supposed to be the experts. I don't somehow feel deficient tonight, right? I would like for us to write something or propose to the city council, something that makes sense, that does rely on the people who do know it in the process, where it makes sense in the process. And so is there any, knowing that it doesn't solve everything and change septic system, but is there anything that is, can withstand whatever percentage or square footage that we pick that's within the state standards? Is there already an existing part of the process that we don't have to add anything in? That states, let's say we went with thirty percent, and a thirty percent addition is being created. Does that permitting process already review the current septic system and require an assessment and changes? Does, does the process already do that?
Yes, that would be part of the building permit process.
Okay.
Whatever the additional square footage is, you know, they're designing that out. They're providing the floor plan, and so code enforcement will know that they're going from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, and then they'll have to have an evaluator evaluate the septic system. So the septic system will certainly be designed adequately for the amount of, you know, the gallons of per minute that it's going to receive. It won't necessarily, like I mentioned, have, you know, the treatment that would protect the lake.
And there's nothing in the existing permitting process or standards that addresses the runoff that our environmental engineer mentioned? So one of the things that we could do is require, what was the language you used?
Reconstruction or replacement projects to add filter, strip for roof runoff or driveway runoff.
Buffer strip, which would be vegetation, so, or a filter strip, which would be a soil profile that's going to allow the water to infiltrate. So it would be usually a larger rock with a fabric that keeps the fines out, so you have water storage so the water can infiltrate. And then oftentimes, you combine the two and have, like, say, a row of shrubs with it.
Sorry, that didn't answer my question, but it described parts of it really nicely. Is there anything about the existing process that does already require that? Or would we have to make the recommendation to add that?
We would have to. It's right here in the, the last part of, that talks about the infiltration. Alex?
Is there a way to have some, some language, or is there any precedent for language that says, like, you have to get something from a certified engineer, a professional engineer, saying that the runoff into the lake for the new structure will not exceed, you know, the studied amount of the current structure or something like that? Do we have anything like that for other zones as it stands now? So, you know, if you could, you know, we'll allow thirty percent, but the condition is you have to hire an engineer. They're going to study your existing house. They're going to make note of the conditions. They're going to look at your plans, and they're going to say, we've calculated, based on your plans, that, you know, the new structure with the additions is going to have the same or less runoff as the current structure. Something like that. I know that's a little bit like, you know, you're sort of like asking an applicant to work not in their self-interest, but still.
That's essentially what staff has attempted to do with that language at the end. And I'm sorry, I don't have an answer. I need to know what the section number is. And because planting vegetation and putting in, let's say, a stone trench is not rocket science necessarily, we didn't require it to be designed by an engineer, but instead, there is a certified erosion and sediment control professional sort of certification that the state has with different contractors, or, you know, someone that maybe works for Soil and Water Conservation that isn't a P E could have. So that person could help design a system, being attention would be that the, the water coming off the roof or the back or whatever would be going into that. We could certainly require that they model the pre-development condition, like, current condition versus a post-condition, and make sure that the water is being, you know, a hundred percent infiltrated or whatever. That certainly is about the way to go. But that would usually require an engineer to do that.
I wonder if it would make sense, looking at the language here again, I see what you're saying, if, you know, we took a tiered, two-tiered approach. So for standard surface runoff, parking lots, roofs, we just say, yeah, you know, get an erosion professional to take a look at it and take care of it. For projects that require, because we're already examining if the septic system is big enough, for projects that require changes to the septic system, then having a more comprehensive study. Because I think in my mind, the septic system is definitely a much more complicated problem to work with because you're actually, you know, dealing with concentrated nutrient rather than dispersed stuff that's just, you know, running off the surface. But again, like, do we have, to sort of, to Shannon's theme, like, do we already have this on the book other places?
So I guess I'm trying to understand, so if somebody is modifying their septic system or installing a newer, larger septic system, let's say those are the two options, we'd be asking them to have an engineer study what? Because we know that the septic system is going to be designed appropriately to handle the, the volume of liquid going to it. So what are we asking them?
This, this is coming from probably some ignorance around septic systems, but, you know, I think we can assume that, you know, going from small septic system to big septic system is going to mean more runoff, right? There's just more water.
It's runoff, I think.
Or not runoff, but...
It would, it would be more infiltration into the ground, if you will. Yeah, so more water getting infiltrated into the ground.
More infiltration?
Yeah.
And more nutrient deposition?
Which eventually makes its way underground to the lake through the soil.
And so, you know, let's say the new one is placed in a slightly different area, and because of the rock formation, it's less likely to flow into the lake quickly. You know, it has more of a chance to work its way through vegetation and have that, those nutrients pulled up. Or it's a different design. I'm making stuff up at this point. But I guess in my mind, the, the environmental danger of a septic system seems to be more than just the surface runoff. Maybe that's a bad notion that I have. Maybe I'm not thinking about this right. But I wonder if that could help sort of deal with some of the concerns we're having around expanding a property and increasing the impact from the actual lived-in uses, not just more roof surface, not just more driveway surface.
Yeah, that's definitely, I think, the bigger, a big concern. I'm not sure how we write a regulation on that yet.
Because I don't want to be, like, heavy-handed and just say, you can't make the septic system bigger. Because then I think it's sort of like, yeah, we're not building a bedroom. This is just a, we have like three extra sunrooms in the house now, you know? Like, I feel like it's sort of encouraging people to try and find a way around it.
If I may, the, the state-licensed, you know, folks that are, that are coming out and designing the septic for them, they know all of this as well, and they're not going to allow or design something for these folks that they know to not meet the standard. So I think that's kind of the, the failsafe, if you will, in terms of the, the septic system, is the, is the site evaluators that are licensed by the state that are designing the septic system if one, if a new one should be placed.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we, we need to, to, to address that in, in our ordinance at this point because there are rules, they're, they're following state regs and stuff that, you know, that are much more complicated than what we're trying to deal with. So let's, let, okay, I'll, Mark, and then I'll open it up to the public, and then we can come back and talk.
I have just one question.
Yeah.
The height limitation of twenty-five feet, is that anything that we can adjust?
In, in shoreline zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe that that is a shoreline zoning standard, so I don't think we can go above it. But staff could certainly look at that if that's a concern.
Okay. The only reason why I ask is because obviously the footprint is about runoff. And if people are saying, oh, well, I'd like to expand my property without expanding my footprint, we're obviously limited heading up, right, by twenty-five. Can we accommodate that? We wouldn't seem to have any necessary effect on runoff, right?
Absolutely. I think the height is more about
Aesthetics.
Yeah, or blocking views for neighbors of the lake, that sort of thing. But yeah, that's certainly something that we could explore in the future.
Okay, all right. At this time, I will open up the meeting to the public. If anyone wishes to speak in favor or against the, these changes, please step to the podium and give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. And you can only come up once, so three minutes. So I'm opening it up to the public. If you would, and if anybody else wants to, you can line up and so that we don't have to wait in between. Great.
Hello, my name is Jacob Arada. I live at Three Loon Drive on No Name Pond. And I'd like to speak in favor of updating the No Name Pond overlay district to allow rebuilding of pre-existing homes and to align closer with shoreline zoning. My wife and I, we live in an old camp that's sitting on blocks less than a hundred feet from the water. And after the great storm last December, it was completely flooded under our house, and we knew we had to get our house out of the flood zone. Later, it became clear that our best option was to replace our house completely. And since then, we've been spending a lot of time and money planning and designing a new home with guidance from the previous planning administration, who let us know we should conform to shoreline zoning, but never mention the overlay district restrictions. We designed our plan with shoreline zoning's footprint, print, expansion restrictions of thirty percent or about three hundred square feet added in our circumstances. And we really just want to increase the size of our home to have the space to start a family and stay in Luston long-term. I also believe the state's guidelines in shoreline zoning for expansions and impervious surfaces allowed is good, and Luston shouldn't need to be stricter than the state since they've had experts look at what's acceptable while also reducing runoff and pollution. We understand the concerns about the water quality of the pond caused by septic use and runoff, but thankfully, our neighborhood is connected to the city sewer. We do have septic tanks, but instead of having our own leach fields, the city has a pump station that pumps directly to the leach field over a quarter mile away. We also have a vegetative buffer between our land and the pond to stop runoff and erosion. We love living on the pond and want to protect it for future generations. So overall, I think it would be beneficial and fair for the people Luston to update the overlay district to align closer with the state's shoreline zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Curran. I'm at Thirty-Eighth Shore Road. I had a camp that was recently a victim of arson about a year ago, and there was absolutely nothing, nothing left to it. So I got the soil and water conservation involved also so that I could go in the right direction, have a good understanding of what was going on. So I just wanted to mention that they are a resource that is really, really good. I worked with a young lady over there. She gave me a lanar contour of the land, was every three feet. She was able to allow me to give me some, some information I submitted to the, to the city, which showed the contour of the property, because with the camp burning and stuff and the distance it was next to the water, they made recommendations of taking the camp, turning it ninety degrees, which backed it up another fifteen to twenty feet further from where it was, which I'm in total agreement of, in lines of better with the existing septic system that I put in, which is new, has never been used. Prior to that was a septic tank, excuse me, an outhouse, which I was surprised outhouses are allowed. You know, and that was determined during a two thousand study, around two thousand, where the soil and water conservation got involved. They made recommendations to the road. They submitted us some money. I was having a problem with snowmobiles going up my bank, eroding the, the bank and putting that soil into the water. So with them, we put riffraff, changed the angle of the land, put riffraff. And so I said, I don't want to stop the snowmobiles. They have to have a way to get off. And I'm willing to work with them. And to be honest with you, with the snowmobiles there, my damage to my camp was cut down considerably because I'm very private where I am, and I have squatters and everything else, and that's why the camp burnt, which I recently found out the person that burnt it, but we're in the process of working on that now. But there's been a lot of improvements over the years through the soil and water conservation. So one of the things that I've listened over here is that last year was a bad year. But it was a bad year and it affected the water, meaning that we had heavy rains in December and stuff like that. It did a lot of damage. But if that was years ago, the damage would have been much, much, much more. Because with the increase, the improvements we did with the roads, such as buffer strips in the driveways that are at an incline, you put every thirty feet of soil, you put rubber, and it reroutes the water off the, off the road. The, the lining of the ditches and the diversion of the water through weirs on the top of, of hills and stuff like that, a lot, a lot of improvements. So I'm just saying this because of the history. When I, I've been there my whole life. I'm sixty-six.
Time's up. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against? Okay, in that case, I will close it to the public, and I will bring it back to the board and entertain questions or a motion. Ms. Cox?
I have a, I have a question. As I'm looking at the...
I have a, I have a question. As I'm looking at the, so hard for me not to focus in on the language that we're actually making a motion on tonight, right? And where in the existing piece that we're looking at that's being edited, is the reference to any expansion restrictions that are stricter than the shoreline?
Yeah. So on page two of that article 11, you can see where it says, at the top, there's a chart there, minimum setback from shoreline, all structures other than permitted piers, docks, marinas, and similar water-dependent use is 100 feet. So the interpretation of code enforcement is that structures within 100 feet are not allowed. So that would be an expansion, that would be a new house, that would be, you know, new garage, anything like that. So at this point, we are not permitting any new structures to be placed within 100 feet.
And the reference to 1,500 or 30% is only within 100 feet?
Um, which reference, the language that I've added?
So in the memo where you're referencing what the state's shoreline.
Yep.
Allows.
Yep.
And what I understand is we just don't allow it in the overlay district, the entire overlay district?
No, the first, well, it's within 100 feet, so it's really the first 100 feet of the overlay, we don't allow the structures.
And then outside of it, we default to the state's 1,500 or 30%?
That's right. So it's 250 feet is shoreline zoning, so it would be that 150 feet behind that we would default to the state.
So we're just kind of like very binary, there will be no alterations within 100 feet, and then anything beyond 100 feet references the state's shoreline?
That's how we believe this is written and how staff code enforcement has interpreted it. Yeah, we don't see wiggle run, because there is another section here somewhere where it says if there's a discrepancy, the stricter applies. So we didn't feel that we could default to the shoreline zoning within that 100 feet.
Okay, Mr. Marcock?
I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, zoning and land use code to Article 11, district regulations to amend the No Name Pond Overlay District, and specifically in Article 11, that would be Section 24, and anything that was amended in those sections.
Okay.
Within that section.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Roger, do we have any further discussion?
And just to be clear, when we're talking about the modifications, we're talking about the ones made tonight, not the, not just the under, underlined piece. Just saying that for the record.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. I didn't go through all the numbers, but.
Getting rid of the if.
Right, just, with the changes that, that are proposed by staff.
By staff.
Yeah, the changes proposed by staff are in Section 24, 2G6, going backwards, 2H, 2F, and the title line on 2, which is simply changing the naming of the district itself from LC to an NP.
And, and six, number six, the last page, on the last.
Yeah, 2G6, yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
So all of the recommended changes in this particular. Clarifying question, because I think Alex thought he was getting a different answer. I, I think what he's asking is, so as presented with the one change recommended during discussion tonight, which would fall under 2F, where it would state however where Article 12, yada, like that change that you captured earlier. So we're just naming that, and, and since you made the motion, is that what you're motioning? That's the clarifying question.
Okay. According to staff's memo, with the general consensus of that change earlier?
Correct. Okay, all right. All right, so, all right, everybody ready? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcock?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
All right. So watch for the City Council. When is the City Council going to take this up?
Um, it'll be in January.
More than likely, January 9th.
Okay. So January 9th meeting, if you want to come to the City Council meeting and put in your two cents, you can, you can come, okay?
Good luck with your rebuilds and your family.
Good luck with your rebuilding, and good luck with your, uh, building a new, a new home.
Happy homemaking.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, next public hearing. New Beginnings, Inc. has submitted an application for conditional use permit and development review to operate a 12-bed homeless shelter for people aged 18 to 24 years at 436 Main Street. The shelter will replace an existing 12-person warming center. And Craig?
436 Main Street. The existing structure consists of four transitional housing units on the two upper floors. These pay rent and function as apartments. The first floor of the building is used as an overnight warming center and associated services for 12 individuals experiencing homelessness. This warming center was converted from the existing conference rooms, it was a conference room before, it was offices before, then it became a warming center, and New Beginnings is currently proposing to convert that warming center into a homeless shelter. This homeless shelter will operate from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, seven days per week during the winter months through April. The number of guests for this use will remain at 12, and there are no change, sorry, there are no changes proposed for the four transitional housing units. There are also no changes proposed for the total paved area or the building footprint. The proposed use of the property as a homeless shelter is permitted upon approval of a conditional use permit, and, you know, again, we're looking at the sort of current, I know we sort of, I don't want to confuse, I know we've looked at, you know, sort of changing the ordinances, looking at the current ordinance. So again, the proposed use of the property as a homeless shelter is permitted upon approval of a conditional use permit.
Okay. All right.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're not done?
There's still more, yeah.
Sorry, 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 go ahead.
Sorry.
You took a breath, and I thought it was.
I did, I was thinking about where to go from there. So on November 19th, 2024, the City Council changed the licensing requirements for homeless shelters, lifting the requirement that they operate 24 hours a day. Typically, this would not take effect for 30 days after, however, at the same meeting, they granted emergency approval of a license to New Beginnings. Under the five conditions, and those conditions are listed, the applicant shall obtain any required building permits, applicant shall obtain a change of occupancy permit, applicant shall obtain a conditional use permit, applicant shall obtain development review approval, and the applicant shall obtain the appropriate permits from the state fire marshal's office. They can get, they can get C and D today from us, and upon approval of the conditional use permit and development review, and the completion of any conditions added, the applicant can then move forward with applying for the rest, and that would include the state fire marshal's office approval and anything else they needed. Staff first received an application from New Beginnings on November 22nd, provided initial comments that addressed minor clarifications and potential site improvements. Again, because it's an existing structure, existing site, it's really just a change of use that we were looking at, staff comments were fairly minimal. These have been addressed with two exceptions. So exterior lighting, these exterior lighting shall be required at all entrances. During a site visit, staff noted six entrances on the building, of which five are currently lit. However, all required lighting must be cut off or dark sky compliant, and three of these entrances either do not have lighting or have lighting that does not meet these standards. So one of the conditions that staff's recommending is that they fully meet the, the standard and have six entrances with full cutoff lighting. The second note was the waste disposal. Waste disposal will need to be addressed. As it is designated as a commercial building, the property will not be eligible for city trash collection. The applicant will need to provide a plan for the adequate disposal of solid wastes to be reviewed and approved by city staff. If this includes a dumpster or other exterior trash storage, then this will also trigger the buffer requirements and, or, sorry, the screening requirements, and that could include a fence, that could include some creative landscaping, but those requirements are laid out in the design district standards. You'll, and that's another condition that staff is recommending. You'll see a, again, those conditions are laid out on the next page. You'll see two motions, two actions necessary, one to approve the conditional use permit, and one to approve the development review application. We'd recommend that the two, two conditions or any other conditions that you place would be placed on the, the second motion, the development review application. You'll also see standards for conditional use permits, that's just there for, for reference. The applicant has addressed those.
Okay. All right. Anyone on the board have questions? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yeah, if you would come and, come up and give your name and, and address, and speak into the microphone, because this is being recorded.
Hi, I am Chris McNell, I'm Executive Director of New Beginnings at 134 College Street.
Stephanie Salzman, Director of Finance and Administration, New Beginnings at 134 College Street.
Okay. Did you want to make any comments?
We're going to check technical difficulties on that microphone.
We'll share.
Okay.
So there were two conditions that were mentioned by staff. We believe we've addressed both of those conditions. We've installed dark sky lighting above the door that was not lit, and we have contracted with a dumpster company that should be there, we believe, on the 20th, but until it is there, we've committed that our facilities team will remove any waste and garbage from the apartments that are there and bring that to the transfer station themselves.
Okay. Okay, anyone on the board have any questions for the applicants? Any comments, questions? Alex?
More of a staff question. I live right down the street from this facility and bike and walk by it all the time. It fits in really well. I love having it as a neighbor. What I'm curious about is that, I'm assuming you're putting the dumpster in the lot behind it, which is kind of sunken down from the street, so it, like, you, you could probably have a dumpster sitting in the middle of it, and you can't really see it very easily. So how does the screening requirement handle this? And this is more just for like my knowledge for future discussions. Are we, are we judging it based on sort of like line of sight, or is it just like, there's a dumpster, put a fence around it?
So Craig is pulling up the standard itself, but I'm not sure, I think it might be from visible, like rights of way, so you can certainly see it from the side street, the back parking lot in the back of the building, and certainly there's a apartment building, I think, adjacent where you have a view. So I would think we would want to apply that standard if it's visible. If it was truly tucked back in a spot, let's say they weren't a corner lot, and there was a big fence with a back neighbor, then maybe there wouldn't be a reason to do it.
Got it, okay. Well, that, that answers my question.
Yeah, I, I, I found the language. And it, it does talk about, you know, buffers should screen noise and visual impacts from adjacent public streets and parks, and from abutting property under separate ownership. And so that could include the sort of back property on, I forget the, the side street, it's Main Street, and then.
Curtis.
Curtis.
And so on Curtis Street, there's a property behind, that's on the same level, so that could be screened. Aside from that, there could be a case to make for, you know, it's elevated, so you may not be able to see it.
Okay. Okay. Great. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Roy?
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
So this is current, in, in the current homeless shelter overlay, but with any proposed changes would be outside the zones that were, that we're setting up. I assume that's going to be grandfathered in, is that correct?
That's right. Right now, they, so right, they're in the neighborhood business district. That wasn't one of the districts that was included. They are, however, in that homeless shelter overlay, which presumably won't be existing in a few months.
Okay. Michael?
I noticed that as well, thought that was quite interesting, especially with both topics coming up tonight, and the grandfathering clause, and I, I'm trying to formulate a couple of questions here, it's difficult with where the material's being presented. Now, both motions refer to conditions. We're talking about the same two conditions in both motions?
No, Craig mentioned that the conditions should apply to the second motion, not to the first.
So the first one does not have.
That does not have conditions, correct.
And obviously, when one reads, but not limited to, obviously, there's always an adverse impact to be considered. I, I, so it's, there's a question for the applicant, and I guess there's a question for staff somewhere in here, but I, I'm just curious as to what's going to be done to prevent adverse impact to the neighbors with respect to the occupants. Obviously, the facility itself doesn't really impose, but the occupants might impose on the neighbors, the residential quality of life in the area, the business operations in the area, as we'll be discussing later when we talk about ordinance changes. So I'm wondering what's being done there to make me feel comfortable in supporting this. And I guess this is where it's more of a question for staff, and it's probably more in a licensing role, that if things become bad, we, we can't reverse a permit, but can a license be revoked? So, so it's a, a double question, but one is more for the applicant, one is more for staff.
I, I can answer for staff, so as part of the new licensing requirement, they, they do have to agree to a good neighbor policy, and I will let the applicant speak more to that, but I, I would assume that's what he was getting ready to speak to anyway.
Okay. Do you want to address?
Sure, I can address the question.
And then we'll go to Roger.
We operated a warming center at 134 College Street last year for the same period during the winter. We had zero calls for service. This is our expertise area, we train our staff very well. This shelter will be open from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, so it's only an overnight shelter. What time is lights out?
They're in by 11:00.
They're in by 11:00 PM, so there's not even exiting the building after 11:00 PM. The maximum number of people we've seen use this program so far, in the brief time it's been open, has been eight. It's a very small group of people. And again, this building has been housing people who qualify as homeless according to HUD for well over a decade, and there is very few impacts in the community. We do, we are very responsive when we get calls from our, our neighbors in the community, and we have relationships with everyone in the building, because that's the work we do.
Okay. Yeah, Roger, you had a question?
Can you explain the difference between the four apartments on the first floor and the 12-bed homeless on the second floor?
Yes, the four apartments on the, on the top floor are what are called by the federal government transitional living apartments, and so they are designated for young adults ages 18 to 22 years old, and once they enter into the program, they can stay into that program for 18 months. That program requires them to pay 30% of their income towards rent and allow New Beginning staff into their lives to a certain capacity. The goal is that in the end of that 18 months, they have the skill set and the financial capacity to enter into market-rate apartments.
Now, do they have any interaction with these people, and the homeless on the?
No, there's, there are two, there's actually a floor of the building separating the apartments from the shelter, and it's also two different populations. They may not even know each other, because the, they're just different groups of people.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before I open it up to the public? Yes, go ahead, Shannon?
This question's a little bit in service of our next exercise as well, and just great timing for you guys tonight. But the, it's helpful to hear about the long history and the fact that you operated this last year without any concerns. One of the conversations this board has had is about what I would say the higher potential for negative neighborhood impacts when it's not a 24-hour shelter, because assumedly at 8:00 AM, there's 12 people who now have to figure out what to do with their day, particularly on set, well, on the weekends, I would say, though some of these students might not be students in school. students in school, right? Though it's not required yet, can you tell us a little bit more about what has worked for you over the last year and what they're doing after 8:00 AM?
So, so, New Beginnings has a, a wide array of services, and we believe that just providing housing is not enough, that young people who are growing into young adulthood need to develop the skills for independence. And so we have many resources to help those young people do that. And so when our, our shelter closes at 10:00 AM, we open a drop-in center at 134 College Street, where my office is, and that center allows people to be there until, I believe it's 5:00 PM. And so the services that are available there are case management, mental health services, food, basic needs, and engagement, really. And so if there are young people who have a higher level of needs that are using our emergency shelter or warming center, those services are accessible to them at 134 College Street. We also connect everyone with Housing Navigation Services, and if someone is too old, they're old enough to use the warming center, our drop-in center ends at 22, so there's this two-year gap. If they're too old to come into our drop-in center, we have offices in other locations in that building where they can receive the same services, case management, they just can come in and get a hot-plated meal, but they can get all the other services, including education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I, I have a comment, though. In, in our motions, and it, we call them youths, they're 18 to 24. And, and, they're not youths. I mean, by the time I was 24, I had two kids.
We are from a different generation.
Yeah, we sure are. We sure are.
What was considered youth then and youth now is different, but I, I can address that if you'd like.
Well, and just for credit, you didn't write the memo in which that was described that way.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. So, the state defines youth, the Department of Health and Human Services is denying, defines youth as young people aged 10 through 22, for the licensed shelter that we operate. Main Housing, if you ask them, they are funding us to run a, a warming shelter for transition-aged youth. The Department of Health and Human Services would also identify young people aging out of foster care at their 18th birthday are labeled by the department as transition-aged youth until their 24th birthday. The federal government has a different definition of what youth is, so we are referring to the people who would be using this shelter as young adults.
Okay.
To avoid that.
Okay.
Muddiness.
Yeah, I, I'm just being nitpicking.
Certainly.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone out in the audience who would wish to speak in favor or against this, this item? Yes?
Can we make a microphone available to the gentleman instead of having him navigate to the...
Instead of having, yeah, can that, can that, whoops, watch it. Yeah, there we go. Can you state your name and your address, sir?
Bob Drake, 449 Main Street.
Okay.
Right across the street.
Mm-hmm.
First, I'd like to say they have been good neighbors, which is great. We have three properties on 449, we have a lot at 455, the building at 453 at the end of the driveway, used to be ours, we sold it to our daughter, so it's kind of still ours. So, we have three pieces of property I'm interested in. My main concern is, how will you book people? I, when I go by the intersection of, of College and Sabbathus, I see people hanging around the church there, waiting to get in. I want to make sure, do they get booked or something, so it's not going to be people hanging around? Okay. And when they finish, they'll leave. My concern is people hanging around our drive or camping on our lawn or whatever. Not that I don't care about people who are hurting, but that...
Absolutely, absolutely.
What is the maximum number of people in the building?
Unfortunately, he doesn't get to answer all the questions until the public comment's done.
That's it.
Sorry, sir. We, we nor anyone else can answer you until the full public comment period is done, and then we have a chance for some discussion.
Then he'll answer you after.
Kind of unsatisfying, but there it is.
Okay.
Thank you for my questions, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this proposal? All right, in that case, I will close it to the public. And the gentleman wanted to know, my suggestion would be for you to give him your phone number, so that if there are any issues, you would have a telephone number and a name and telephone number to call if you have any issues with somebody hanging out, okay? I think that would be a, a good solution for that, yes?
Well, and just in the, in the public's question, I think there might be some assumptions, some of which might bear out and some of which might not, that people who are waiting for access to the church came from this one particular shelter, when there's a number of homeless populations in our community who be, might be waiting outside. You might see people waiting outside the church, and it'd have nothing to do with the 12 people he's serving. So feel free to call, but realize that there are a number of, of unhoused populations who seek support in different, or shelter in different places in our community, and they don't necessarily all come from or go to the same place, and you're probably not housing them all.
Right.
I understood the comments slightly differently, and I, I hope this isn't an unfair characterization. I think the person from the public brought up the church as an example of a place where people are waiting to get services, and, you know, it can be a little chaotic, there can just sort of be people on the street, and, you know, that's a busy intersection there, and Main Street's a busy place, too.
Yeah.
And I heard sort of a, an air of concern around the people you'll be serving, and making sure that they have a safe place to wait while the shelter opens. And, and something I was thinking about, too, you know, I'm often biking or walking home after work, you know, around 6:00 or something, and this time of year, it's mighty cold at 6:00. And so, yeah, just wait, waiting for the, the shelter to open at 8:00 seem, you know, and it sounds like you're, I know you're doing the best you can, but, you know, there's, there's a pretty large gap of, of time that people have to figure out after dark, in the cold, often in bad weather. Is the, maybe a more constructive question, is the entrance for this function going to be around back off the parking lot?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and so, so there's sort of a, you know, if you look at the site plan, and I don't know if we can pull this up so that the audience can see, but you can see it more here. So you expect people to be coming in sort of in this general area?
That, that is the entrance, yes.
Okay. So, more than likely, you would expect people to be waiting around back?
Correct. We, we've also set a policy that no one can arrive before 7:30, when our staff is there, so that intake begins at 7:30. If people are arriving before 7:30, we will have a conversation with them about whether or not they are appropriate to access our shelter. We also, last year at our shelter, we, we know we have people accessing our shelter who might have mobility issues, or who it might just be too cold to walk where they're getting to. So in the mornings, if someone needs a ride somewhere, we will transport them there within a reasonable distance, if it's to work, or if it's over to Trinity Jubilee, or if it's to our own location, we will do that, because, again, this is what we do, we care about these people.
Okay, thank you.
Are there different people that keep coming, or is it the same people?
I, it's usually the same. Our experience from last year was, we had a core group of people who used the, the center all winter, and then there was another group of folks who might be living unstably, and one night it's safe to be there, and one night it's not, and so they would come and go as safety assessments were made in their own lives.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Michael?
Is it first come, first served?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if you're somebody who wants to be a repeat customer, you need to be there before it fills up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's also, I'm curious, pardon my ignorance, but what is going on at the church? And I assume you're talking about the former St. Joseph's Church?
No.
No?
I think he was referencing the Methodist Church.
Calvary Church on the corners of Addison.
Yeah.
And Bartlett and College.
Oh, Calvary.
Yeah, the, the one in the corner. Yeah, the one that was the warming shelter last year.
And there's something going on there as well?
I don't know.
No, the, the public comment brought it up as an example from last year, but...
As an example?
As an example of people waiting to get into a warming shelter.
Okay, so it's not currently a warming shelter?
It is not part of the...
No, no, there's nothing there.
The application.
Okay.
Okay.
I was getting an impression on a different property.
Sure.
Amy? So, I have a question, because I always ask about the trash. So how is the trash being managed now?
So, we currently, we were under the impression that the property was residential, so it was being removed by the city trash removal. We've been informed that because we have offices in that building, it's a commercial space, and so we are immediately transitioning over to dumpsters.
Okay. And so from a grandfathering standpoint, so now there are a lot of dumpsters in the downtown that don't have any kind of screening on residential properties?
Yeah.
How does, how does that work? This is for staff. Like, when, you know, when do people have to screen their dumpsters?
Yeah, so at this point in time, it's when they install a new dumpster as part of development review, like, like when the design standards apply is when we actually are doing development review. So at this point in time, they're coming in tonight for development review. We've identified the fact that actually the city already had it coded as not being eligible for pickup, it was just that the hauler was picking up accidentally. So, that's being rectified, so they now have to sort out a trash solution, and since that's part of the development review criteria that was flagged.
Okay, so when somebody who owns apartments decides that they're going to install a dumpster, they don't have to do any kind of design review?
Um, not at this time. I believe the screening is a guideline for, let's see. We don't always know, there's no permit for installing a dumpster, so if someone installs a dumpster, we wouldn't necessarily have that triggered. Buffering and screening. So, the way this is written, it should be screened, so because it's, that language implies that it's a request from the city, but not absolutely required, so it's really teeth that the planning board or staff review committee, when we're doing development review, can require.
Okay, thanks.
So that's how it's currently written and applied.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Yes, Michael?
Because trash was just brought up, it made me think of something I shared with people here, a couple meetings back, about another area of town where this issue became a concern. So I'm wondering about your property management and, let's say, the pickup of trash and/or needles that may be on, on your property, of course, you can't be responsible for, no, it's not on your property.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you can address that. And I just, I'm just curious, is the property leased and therefore a taxable property? Or...
Property's owned.
What's that?
We own the property.
You own the property and therefore nonprofit?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because there is a huge concern in Lewiston about the expansion of nonprofits. Obviously, it's already in that status.
Correct.
So you can talk to the, the needles and/or trash property?
Certainly. We own many properties throughout the region. Our staff is accustomed to carrying the long grabby thing to pick up garbage when they arrive at work every day and before they leave, and they have garbage cans. And so we do needle collection all the time in areas in and around our properties, and not only on our properties, but we know that people coming and going from our properties may not care as much about the neighborhood as we do, so we try to be good neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay. In that case, Shannon?
I was going to make a motion.
No, I was just going to ask if someone to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by New Beginnings, Inc., for a 12-bed homeless shelter for youths, or young adults, age 18 to 24, at 436 Main Street, meets all of the necessary standards for a conditional use permit contained in the zoning and land use code in Article 10, Section 3, standards for conditional use permits, and that approval be granted. Period, because we didn't put any other restrictions.
Right. Second, Roger?
Yes.
Okay, any further questions or comments? In that case, off all the roll, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes?
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by New Beginnings, Inc., for a 12-bed homeless shelter for young adults ages 18 to 24, at 436 Main Street, meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, code including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions. That prior to the issuance of a building or change of use permit, the applicant provides a waste management plan to be approved by city staff. If this includes a dumpster or other exterior trash storage area, screening will be required, which meets the standards of the Design District Standards. And that prior to the issuance of a building or change of use permit, the applicant provides a lighting plan that indicates lighting at all entrances to approve, to be approved by city staff. All lighting must be dark sky compliant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Alex, we'll, we'll let Alex be the second this time?
You got it.
Okay, and any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes? All right, go ahead.
Good luck.
Can I provide the phone number that was asked for?
Yes, for the public record?
Yes, yeah, please, give it.
Absolutely. So if you want to reach me Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, you can reach me at 837-4077. If you have concerns or questions about any of our programs 24 hours a day, including the warming shelter, you can call 837-4070.
Okay.
Thanks.
If you would give that, maybe give it on a small piece of paper to that gentleman, there we go. All righty. Okay, so if you have any concerns, sir, just...
I'm sorry, it's not 837, that was my childhood, it's 795-4077.
I thought you just gave away your child's phone number, which would have even been worse.
Okay. Okay, let's start over again. All right. Okay, so the next item on public hearing is the planning board sending a recommendation to the city council on ordinance changes to change the locations where a homeless shelter is allowed, including changes to Appendix A of the zoning and land use code, Article 2, Definitions, Article 3, Official MAP, Article 4, Establishment of Districts, Article 10, Conditional Uses, and Article 11, District Regulations. Shelley? Oh, oh, kidding.
All right, so on October 21st, the board initiated changes to the zoning ordinance and map for homeless shelters, and discussed potential changes, and had a workshop on November 4th, and again on November 18th for further discussion of changes. So, I summarized in the memo the changes that we have in the packet for you this evening, based on discussion with you. So the first is Article 2, which is definitions. There are some changes to align the definitions with the changes that the council made to the licensing requirements and licensing definitions. In Article 3, we have a draft map for discussion this evening that aligns with what was discussed at your workshops on November 4th and 18th. Article 4, there's a minor change to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district in the list of zoning districts, because the board was looking to use zoning districts strictly as your determination for where shelters could be, not a special overlay. In Article 10, Conditional Uses, additional criteria for a conditional use permit has been added for homeless shelters. And in Article 11, District Regulations, changes to Section 22, the land use table to eliminate the overlay district, and then also to provide language that allows shelters based on the zoning districts. And then the Note 40 dictates more specifically what type of shelter is allowed where, what buffers apply, and whether any screening from additional residential uses is required. And that's also summarized in the table that we provided, which is really for your purposes and council, it wouldn't become part of the ordinance, but it's just for illustrative purposes. And then finally, in Section 24 of Article 11, currently there's a homeless shelter overlay district description, so we would be striking that language. I also noted under the motion that has been prepared, that in order to be consistent with the changes proposed, the council would need to update Chapter 22 Licensing to have school and daycare buffers measured from property line to property line, and to add parks to that list of buffers. line to property line and to add parks to that list of buffers. So you may want to have that be kind of a comment that goes with your motion that staff would provide to them with these recommendations, if you keep these recommendations as they're drafted tonight.
Okay. Questions and comments? Ms. Cox?
I have a question about definitions, and I'm suffering from a cold and it's been a bit of a Monday for me, so could be me. For each of these, we're breaking down size and we're breaking down hours. Have we defined family or youth?
So family shelter and youth shelter are defined.
Is it related to licensing and live somewhere else?
Yeah, so if you, on the Article 2 page that we provided, there's a double sides. On the back, family shelter and youth shelter are defined, and those have been pulled from licensing, but we've added the-
Sorry, are you referencing this?
Yes.
Because that's what my question's stemming from. It doesn't say family, which serves a construct of family unit, and it doesn't say youth, which serves a population aged up to-
Oh, okay.
So I meant like literally, like how are we defining family unit?
Gotcha.
Or youth that somehow separates the populations, because these three definitions are segregating the populations, and within each of those three definitions, it's segmenting by hours of service and size. But all three of these pretty much read the same except for homeless, family, and youth.
Yeah, so Craig is gonna pull up the licensing right now because I believe it is defined there. It's not defined in our zoning and land use code.
To piggyback on Shannon's question as you're looking that up, I was rifling through this as well because I was remembering the discussion we had about what defined youth for age brackets, and we just heard about that in the development review.
Right, and with the new beginnings, and I mean, you know, depending on, it all depends on which definition we're using. I mean, it seems that there is like three or four different definitions of youth.
Because my view during the development review was, as far as I was concerned, it was an adult facility from the discussion that we've had at several meetings.
Craig, stop.
I mean, if-
You're there. Stop.
If there's a different definition for new beginnings because of the agencies that the state and federal government-
They deal with.
They deal with, is an 18 to 14, that's fine. But I want to make sure that ours goes back to the discussions that we've had at some of the last meetings.
Yep, Mark?
No, I was gonna say, it doesn't really matter how the applicant defines youth, it only matters how our-
How we define it.
Right.
Right. And so that's Chapter 22, Article 16, and that's the cross-reference here. And we cross-referenced it instead of just putting that really important information in the same document because God forbid the other one changes. We don't have to change it in two spots. Was that the-
Yeah, and the council requested that we not have a shelter definition anymore in zoning and land use code that we reference back to them because of kind of that back and forth.
Okay.
So that was their preference, was it would live in licensing and we would reference.
Right. Yeah, I think it's probably, you know, better, just like where we reference the shoreline zoning for No Name Pond and not be, you know, articulated again. I think that that's just-
Craig, can you blow that up, please?
Michael, and then Alex?
On that note, just want to be cautious that, okay, it's defined in licensing, not in the recommendation that we're making. However, we do have a solid position on what those age brackets should be. In the future, that means that licensing can be handled purely at the council level without involving us. We want to make sure that they understand at this time that we concur with the language in the licensing. We don't want to see that change.
If I may add as well, this is the, this is not updated yet, I don't believe. This is still within the 30-day period. And so if you look at the one that the council just voted on, the last sentence after Part 2 there on homeless children or youth, it states that for youth shelters within the city, the state definition of homeless youth shall be applied due to state licensing requirements. And I don't see that on there. So I think this is the, you know, older definition.
And the state defines it as?
That's a good question that we'll have to go back and look and find. What does the state define it as? So that's gonna cross-reference that. It's gonna take some time to look that up, but we can look it up.
We could just ask Chris to come back in and tell us, because I feel like he just rattled it. Play the tape back. I feel like we got that a second ago.
I don't want to break him away from the media right now.
Right, but this says 21 years of old, and theirs is gonna go up to 24.
Right. Yeah, because it all depends on which-
HUD definition.
Yeah, I think HUD is the one that goes up to 24, and their homeless population, like the-
DHHS went to 22.
22, right, so.
Well, my concern is the fact that we went through a 12-block grid of where and what zonings what can be had by size, by 24, yeah, 24 or 12 hours and so forth. I want to be, and just to come back to the development review, the development review was also done on the old rules, the overlay district that's in place until such time that the council changes that through recommendation process. So again, I viewed the development review tonight as an adult facility, so the age, 18 to 24, didn't make much difference to me. Now, if he had come to us six months later, next year's go-around, and he was allowed because he's in the NB as opposed to an overlay district, this is very concerning as to whether the age brackets are gonna be different than what we've been discussing for three or four meetings.
So I have the definition from the state of Maine, if you'd like to-
Okay.
A homeless youth means a person 21 years of age or younger who is unaccompanied by a parent or guardian and is without shelter where appropriate care and supervision are available, whose parent or legal guardian is unable or unwilling to provide shelter and care, or who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. Homeless youth does not include a person incarcerated or otherwise detained under federal or state law. That is the state definition of a homeless youth.
So my concern there is because we went to a zone-by-zone process, and everyone knows that I had hot burn over NCA, and there's two blocks that permit NCA, and my understanding previous to tonight, 21 or younger, and struggling whether I say, I vote yes or no later tonight. On that note, but if it was above 21, that would probably cement a vote direction. So that's why I'm very concerned about the language that we may or may not have control over.
Alex, and then Shannon?
Okay, so sort of on a similar point, do we have to provide any more clarifying language for a situation like we had tonight, like if that happened in the future? Because it provides services both to youth and to what would be considered adults under what we're coming up with here. Do we have to say, you know, the most, well, and I know it wouldn't really make that much of a difference because it was a non-24-hour program, you know, functionally it would pass through the same way. But like, let's say we had a 24-hour youth shelter that was accepting people up to 24 years of age, right? Would we then say this, I mean, it sounds like we'd have to say that that would be classified as an adult shelter. I think we maybe want some language that talks about like if there is, if there are mixed ages and it does not fit the family shelter definition, then adult shelter shall apply, or something like that. Just, I mean, it stands to reason that you could get there, but maybe we should spell it out.
Shannon?
I respectfully disagree. And I think what I hear is the nature of your concern might be two pieces. One is concern with how old kids are or adults are that are considered youth by the definition. Is it 21? Is it 22? Is it 24? We heard tonight that it is defined as all of the above by different agencies from the federal government, which everyone did that before, and it's super obnoxious. And then the second, because you said that the age number itself might influence your vote. And then the second concern that I think I hear you both speaking to is how do we handle a discrepancy between whom the applicant is planning to house and that which we've laid out in these definitions and in our little matrix. And I would posit that they follow our rules and that tonight we're having this discussion because we don't have rules, because they aren't in place, and tonight's application previously predates us having it. But realistically, an applicant is gonna look at those three definitions with whatever cross-reference solidified and whichever aspect of state government is selected. My issue is, is there one? And is it one? And if three years from now, there's some science report that says adulthood starts at 16, or adulthood starts at 26, I don't really care which it is. I care that there's a number, and that number is applied consistently, and that we don't have cross-reference issues because that's, I think that's where our following planning board members will get stuck saying, well, if it goes up to 23, but that's not a conversation for us. I think it is related to licensing. So if it's defined and there is a definition that we can refer to, it's not just us referring to it. The applicant would then put forward an application they, by themselves or with staff support, would hear, if you do a youth shelter to 26, we're gonna classify it as an adult shelter. We don't care what you call it, and this is where it'll be allowed, and these are the rules that are gonna follow. And the applicant, based on their funding source from main state housing or otherwise, will be faced with a choice. Do we cap it at 21, which allows us funding and access in the city of Lewiston? Or do we allow it to go to 22, and we classify it as an adult shelter and lose the program we were gonna, like, they'll have to make that choice, whatever that may be. By the time it gets to us, it'll be one of those three following into one of those boxes. And the only reason tonight is a little murky is because we haven't made those rules yet, which is the process we're under. So I'm most concerned with a clear, single definition that's referenced in all of the places back to one spot. That's the most important point to me, whatever that standard is.
In ordinance?
Well, I think what we're recognizing is we're setting the ordinance that references definitions in licensing, and licensing is referencing definitions in state documentation. And so whether, at any point, the only thing that will create an actual change will be with the state definition that's cross-referenced by us in licensing. And wherever those chips may fall in whatever way, up or down, they've fallen equally across the board.
Right.
Well, licensing could also be changed to be upward than what the state has.
I think what I'm, I mean, it could be, but what I'm hearing being proposed and the way the definition I just heard you speak to that city council has already approved ensures that their definition for licensing doesn't change and is tied to one standard.
The state standard.
Right.
So the state could cause that to change.
And waterfall it through all of us.
And the city council could change it to 26 years old if it had wanted to, but right now, it's not tying it to the state.
Right.
But ordinance doesn't talk to the point, so it's not part of our recommendation. And what we had discussed in the matrix was what we were willing to permit in various zones. And as we all know, that I had a problem with doing the medium size in the NCA, but it went through.
But we're not doing any in the NCA. The matrix doesn't have NCA on it.
It does.
It does.
Medium and small family and youth 24-hour programs.
So right now, our understanding is that it was 16 to 21, whatever the number was, 21 being the upward limit. Now, if the state guidelines change, that would force our licensing to change, and that could be up to 24-year-olds in your nice NCA zone next to somebody's home. That's the eventual potential for migration that I really don't want to sit here and just ignore.
It could also go down. It could also have the city council intervene.
We cannot predict the future, so we can't solve all the problems fixing things because things will change and-
So should I just stand my ground and because I didn't get NCA completely eliminated from the matrix altogether and just vote no?
It's up to you. That's up to you. Mark?
I'm relatively unconcerned with whether or not the state changes its age limits or if the city decided to change its reference and no longer reference the state and change its definition, because this board could always change it in the ordinance.
Yeah, we can come back and make another recommendation, too.
The state decides to change it to a youth is anybody up to the age of 40, I think we could, I think we could come back and go, well, yeah, okay, that's nice, but for this, we're gonna change.
It could look more like Haiti, right?
Well, no, what I'm saying is the worrying about that, I think, is not necessary.
Or a planning board. We're planning for Lewiston's future, and I've lived here my entire life, and I've seen a lot of negative in the last 40, 44 years since I graduated high school. And I just want to put some sort of stopgap in place.
That can always be handled, should that come up.
No, not necessarily.
Oh, your conscience. Yeah, your conscience, okay.
We're a board that's recommending to the city council, and we want to make sure that the city council understands from a planning perspective, unfortunately, we've had some city councils here. It would've been nice if they had been here tonight to hear this and maybe even participate in the public hearing portion of it. Because what I've seen over the last 12 months really concerns me with the direction, and we're gonna get an opportunity in this discussion to take a look at those two letters that we got today.
Mark?
And then also, I share Shannon's comment that I'm unconcerned with trying to have some additional language that for those shelters that would encompass both youth and adults, that would just default to adults.
Adult, right.
Automatically, just the way you read it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, let's open it up to the public and then we can come back and discuss. I'll open it up to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Zoe Lidstrom. I'm at 171 Walnut Street in Ward 5. Just wanted to generally speak in favor of this recommendation to get rid of the overlay district. I think you're allowing for a lot more flexibility, which is certainly something that's needed in terms of trying to tackle this really intractable problem. So that's basically what I came here to say tonight. Additionally, with respect to the age thing, I do think it makes sense to stick with one definition, go with what the state says. I realize that that can be a moving target, but as some of the planning board members have pointed out, that can always be addressed later. That is part of what the planning board does. And I think, yeah, the definition of youth changing is a bit of a cultural and societal thing. As was pointed out, you know, 40 years ago, 24 years old, a lot of people were married with kids. It's a lot harder to get off the ground as an 18 to 24-year-old today, so I think that's why these shifting numbers are happening. But again, that's something that can just be addressed as needed if for some reason it seems that it's a problem. But it seems better to have a single definition than to have multiple definitions and just kind of keep it simple. So thanks for the work you're doing in support of this change, and thanks for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Okay, well, there's no one else in the public, so I'm gonna close it and bring it back. To the board, Shannon?
I have a question for staff and a comment. Heck of a job getting our comments over multiple periods into some clear documents and language that allow us, allow me to feel good acting. My question is in reference to Appendix A, zoning and land use code, Article 11, our index document here on the second page, A11-2. Everything that's being recommended that's new in the land use table notes 40, I take that, in the way government does, to give us words that convey this. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Great. Is this going somewhere? So that somebody who is looking at our language to be able to like do the thing, whatever thing, whatever box they're gonna fall in, this really useful table that breaks down all of that necessary clear language into something that's usable, this going in somewhere, too? Or is this just to help us have discussion and then relate back to some complicated language that is not as simple as this?
Yeah, I agree.
Come on! Can we put the table, like, give a visual aid?
Yeah, I agree.
Did we make that recommendation tonight? We did a whole district overlay design book with visual aids that makes it easy for people to understand, yeah, we want to work with you in this way, in this place.
Little homeless pamphlet.
Yeah, I mean, I- Different brain processing style. I'm gonna make an amendment to tonight's motion, but this is included in that piece. Please note that.
I agree with you. I-
All this pretty work lives nowhere past tonight, yeah?
Yeah. I like the matrix myself. I'm visual more than language, and the two together, you know, in here, reference C-
And the two together, you know, in, in here, reference C, C grid on page X.
See Shelter Zoning Matrix, prepared 11/27/24. Like, call it what you want.
Whatever you want to call it, but it, it needs to be in there to, to make it a lot easier for, for people to understand.
We're not against tables. We're just against simple ones. Yeah?
Yeah.
Is there any reason that I can't make that amendment to tonight's motion?
You can make any, any motion that you like. I, I would ask, would it be, would it be just as useful as part of the application process that we could provide it at that time?
Yeah, and on the website. Cool.
Or on the website and just as, not as a part of the actual ordinance, but as a, as a, as a document that can be provided?
Let's keep that red tape thick in those ordinances where they require. Come on. Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be useful in those other places. Is there a reason it cannot be integrated into this document?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll default to Deputy Director Norton.
It would just be too cool and new-fangled of us to do something that simple.
No, we could certainly include it.
I'm a fan of both and here. Put it in the application. Post it on social media.
Put it everywhere.
Include it in the language.
Everywhere.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
That's my only comment.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I agree.
Thank you. Because I'm looking at this, because what is the 40? C40?
It's a restaurant.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
Could resist.
Well, that is a good question for you to understand. So when you go to the land use table and you go to page two.
Of the land use table?
Yeah.
The land use table. You'll see that toward, two-thirds of the way down at the bottom of the residential section is homeless shelters.
Purple. Right. In purple, in purple.
And there was a Note 40, which there still is. We've just replaced the language in Note 40.
Where, where is Note 40?
Note 40 is, is right here.
That's the thing you were just cross-referencing.
This is Note 40.
Okay. Thank you, because I looked at this for a long time to try to figure it out.
Yeah, we have a lot of land use table notes.
It's very confusing.
So 40 used to point to the homeless shelter overlay district, and now it points to this regurgitation of the handy chart.
Okay. Anything else? Michael?
Just a question. Where are we in the process? Is there like a public point and then it comes back to us?
It is. We've had the public. We're on the backside.
We're back to us. Okay, so I do have stuff.
We are back. We're back to us and, go ahead.
Before you start, and I don't want you to be interrupted, can I just clarify Amy's question, which I think we got actually a kind of answer to. So C, which means conditional use, 40, here's the note that we're referencing, shows up across the board except for the riverfront and mill districts. And then there's, well, it...
Then there's a 2.
It is in the middle district. Yeah, and there's a 2. But I guess 40C, not the other way around, but 40C in which Amy's asking, I think you were asking, the large adult shelters that operate 24-hour programs may also be... Did you get your question answered, Amy?
Well, I mean...
Around what, because I think I heard you say, I read the words in 40C. And I'm not sure what that relates to with the matrix and the table. Is that...
This is, this is the words of 40C that, that may for that...
Was that your question?
No, no, I just didn't know what the 40 meant. And now I see that it's a note of the land use table that is in Appendix A.
Right.
Article 11, but like, how, how can a normal human look at this table and find the notes?
Oh, why are you asking that question? Yeah, it's, it's separate. Yeah. It's very confusing.
So I'm just, I'm curious. Where do the, you know what I mean?
Where do they reside?
How's this presented to the public and how would one know where to find it?
So it is presented on the website. So the website has the entire ordinance. And, and they can scroll through the PDF. They can see the chart. They can see the, the long chart. And they can see where it says Note C40. And then when they flip that chart over, the very next page after the last chart should be a list of the notes. And they can go to Note 40 and, and read what is presented here.
Okay.
Simple. Sure. Clear as mud.
But when this is done, like, because we're changing a lot of things all at once here, right? But what it's done, it would be good to take, to review that and just sort of say, does this still like, make sense for a human to be able to decipher this? In the format and the layout and the ordering of the document itself. Because I know that that thing has changed so much over the years, and there's yellow stickies and, like, I'm just saying. It would be good to do a review so that we are actually communicating clearly to the public how to proceed if they were considering doing it.
So I, I will brag on these two here really quickly. So every time we've brought a change to you guys, that you guys have made a change to, that has gone to the City Council and they have approved, these two sit down and, and go meticulously through that long chart and update it. So as the ordinances are updated, the chart is updated. So what is online after the 30-days wait period from an approved City Council action, it is updated online. So I get it, it's cumbersome. It, it is what it is right now, but it is updated. And, and I can tell you that this board should look forward to probably some, some action from staff in the near future with, with some changes to, to make our ordinances more readable. But that's for another time.
Right. Fantastic. Alex?
Just a consistency thing. Totally agree with Shanna that we should have the nice matrix available for folks. We say for family and youth, small and medium, all zones except for industrial and riverfront. But if you look at the chart, resource conservation is also a non-permitted area. Very silly, right? Because no one builds anything in resource conservation. But if we're going to be consistent, we probably should update the matrix before we hand it out to people, just in case they get silly ideas.
You mean our, our, the matrix?
Yes, the, the nice little...
Okay.
Twelve-square thing.
If you, if, that's a more complicated recommendation than you think you're making, because then that language would need to be added to A as well?
Needs to be added to A.
Is, do we allow any type of development in resource conservation, new development? Is there a reason to include it or a reason that you didn't when we guided us through our previous conversation?
Resource conservation is a little tricky. It points partly back to shoreline zoning and what's allowed there. So, um, I was looking, for example, at the Lopka site and the adjacent parcel there. And there is shoreline zoning that's very close by where the flood plain to be mapped differently. It's possible that resource conservation could end up being on that site. So it could make sense to allow it. And then kind of whatever environmental restrictions would apply as to whether something's developable or not. But to allow the use might make sense.
You mean it'd be a conditional use? Yeah.
So we could certainly add that to the chart, and then that would simplify things.
Okay.
Sure. And then it goes through?
Yeah. The comment was either way. Either we, we remove it or we add it or whatever.
Yeah, just be consistent.
Make it, make it, make it, make the chart handy.
Okay. Michael?
Speaking of the matrix, and it took me a second to understand that conversation on RSC. But I'm noticing that, yeah, it's all zones, but, so it should be a but, right? If it's, you need the consistency between the table and the matrix. They're all a tool. You don't want conflicts. We've had conflicts in the past where something had to be corrected down the road because it was not caught. But if it's not caught until somebody takes advantage of it, then it won't be us. We, we received a couple of communications ahead of tonight's meeting. And I would like to read one because it mirrors my sentiments quite well.
Can I, could I interject and I apologize? I'd like to backpedal on what I just said. I think it would be best if we did not allow it in resource conservation. As I'm looking at this chart further, I'm realizing that the uses that are allowed in resource conservation are what mirror the state shoreline zoning. But other uses that aren't listed here don't. So I think it would be best to include it in all the other areas as not permitted and to not add it to the land use chart. So I apologize.
All right. So let's, let's be consistent and, and it...
Industrial, riverfront, and resource conservation.
That, that mirrors my preference.
Right. Okay.
Sorry, Michael. Thank you.
Okay, so, yes, go ahead, Michael.
So there were two communications, and one of them is extremely well-written, so I'd like to read it. Dear members of the board...
Could you say who, who sent it, please?
I'll leave that for staff to say because I, I know it's a matter of public record at this point. But I'd like to, um, respect the person or persons who submitted these. I'm suggesting that the comments made mirrors mine quite closely. It may not reflect what you, how you think I may or may not vote tonight. But I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed changes to the zoning laws that would allow for the introduction of homeless shelters in our community. While I understand the importance of addressing homelessness, I believe that permitting shelters in certain areas, particularly residential or mixed-use zones, poses significant risk to the safety, well-being, and cohesion of our neighborhoods. First and foremost, zoning laws exist to ensure that different areas of our community are used in ways that promote the common good, balancing residential, commercial, and public spaces. Changing these laws to accommodate homeless shelters in areas not originally intended for such facilities undermines the careful planning and development that have shaped our community. By placing shelters in residential neighborhoods, for example, the board risks disrupting the character of those areas, potentially lowering property values and creating friction between residents and shelter clients. There is also a valid concern for public safety. Communities that have introduced homeless shelters in residential or business districts have often reported increases in crime rates, loitering, and public disorder, which can create a sense of unease among local residents and business owners. While it is critical to avoid unfairly stigmatizing homeless individuals, the lack of adequate oversight and resources in many shelters means that incidents of criminal behavior or safety concerns can arise, impacting the surrounding community. Additionally, amending zoning laws to accommodate shelters sets a dangerous precedent for future unregulated changes. Zoning laws are meant to provide stability and predictability, ensuring that different uses of land are carefully planned to maintain a balance between housing, commerce, and public spaces. Making exceptions for homeless shelters opens the door to further ad hoc amendments, potentially eroding the integrity of zoning laws and creating confusion for developers, property owners, and residents alike. In conclusion, while I deeply respect the need to address homelessness, I believe that introducing homeless shelters through zoning law changes is not a responsible or effective approach. I urge the board to consider the long-term implications of this decision for both the individuals and these shelters are intended to serve and for the broader community. And this author continues, "Thank you for your time and consideration for my concerns." Doesn't necessarily say we should vote up or down, but it is well-written. Concern about what's going on here and at the council. Another one that accompanied this, that I didn't even see this afternoon, I, I only saw it when I got here. I'm going to try to excerpt from it. So this person says, "From an economic development standpoint, spreading homeless shelters around Lewiston is not something that will benefit most residents and businesses' owners since data shows that they typically cause a decrease in valuation in the properties around them, coupled with the risk of crime and vandalism. I have to believe that a few years ago, when the planning board created the zone, it was meant to serve service, the homeless, by putting shelters in locations where they were most needed, all the while attempting to minimize the negative impact on the rest of the city. I have to imagine that the majority of the homeless are in the downtown, so that's really where the shelters should be. Even the warming shelter now on Lincoln Street is being filled primarily with individuals who have been picked up and transported in a van from one part of the city to another." Those are the excerpts I really wanted to highlight. Referring to Lincoln Street, we saw on social media in the last week or two, now there was an overdose out there. Yes, that's UE. I did support including the UE in the spirit of negotiation. And I continue to have heartburn over particularly the medium-sized 11- to 16 occupants in the family and youth 24-hour program in all zones. I, I don't know why I imagined the NCA was the only one being discussed. Now, because when we saw the entire zoning map with our packet, it was all residential zones for those two blocks in the matrix. I, I came into this meeting thinking, yeah, I, I'll probably vote in favor because it was a good negotiating process. I hope that the City Council can honor, if this becomes a unanimous vote, I hope that the City Council can honor this recommendation in its fullest and not start picking it apart and going in another direction than what we negotiated here. So that's what I have to say on the matter.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Nate, Kate, Roger, I'm sorry.
I have to agree with Mike on it, but I want to add something in regard to the second letter from Kathy Gibson referring to the old Sun Journal building. What is the reason why that was never considered as far as a homeless shelter?
It was considered.
After the last incident.
I'm sorry, are you asking why the city isn't considering that as a location or why the owner...
Well, then Kate does look at the Sun Journal building instead of going out to Schmangy's.
Because it's owned by Lewiston Housing.
It is owned by Lewiston Housing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and so, you know, I, I imagine Lewiston Housing didn't say, you know, you can have our property. You know?
No, I just...
Yeah.
Unless an applicant tells us why, we, we don't ask them why they chose one building over another.
And at this point, the city has yet to use its own resources, manage contract, own permit, and go through this process and submit an application for any homeless shelter. We're completely dependent on private people choosing to endeavor to do this work and then follow whatever codes and ordinances are on the book at the time.
Right. Yes, Mike?
Trying to remember the progression on that because the Sun Journal, and for full disclosure, I used to work for the Sun Journal for 19 years, was in the original overlay district.
Yes.
And it was considered, and that's probably why an individual brought this up in the letter. By the way, it's a different person than the reference to the first letter. But it was going to be a homeless shelter. That, that was the direction it was taking. I have to assume, I can't say 100% with a surety, but financing wasn't, didn't quite become available.
They lost the financing because the licensing was so onerous that they couldn't get the licensing piece done in time to qualify for their financing. So that's why it fell apart.
And, and probably because of the size of the building and all the other dynamics and limitations of the building. But now that we're looking to expand and when this process started and why I agreed to initiating it from the planning board, as was suggested at that first meeting, is so that we had more of a role in it than just blanketing the entire city. And at some point, we allowed UE into our matrix for the recommendation. And I, I think there was another zone that I can't remember the name of, but which so happens to be the Lincoln Street property. And it became a property that wasn't as costly, I would assume, and, uh, smaller, different purpose, different organization as far as how it would approach, what they were going to use it for. So right now, it's a warming center, and it's already had issues such as an overdose out there. And, and someone is witnessing vans dropping people off from other parts of the city. So it's not like it's in an area where it's servicing people who are in that area. And in the future, if the recommendation goes through its full course and UE is included, A, it, it could actually be turned into a homeless shelter. And I think that's why some of the neighbors out there, some who are on record and some private conversations in the community are really upset with the expansion of homeless shelters out into commercial zones, out in... shelters out into commercial zones, out into residential zones. There's people talking about taking their businesses out of Lewiston, talking about moving permanently in their retirement out of Lewiston. These are things that the planning board and the city council need to consider. Can't be just somebody's personal agenda for one reason or another, whether it's an industry that they make their living at or whether it's their political motivations. It's something that we need to be concerned about. I, I saw a very industrious Lewiston when I grew up. Policy for the last forty-four years of my adult life has been quite contrary, and if this is my last stand, I, I want to make sure that we do everything we can to stop that and try to reverse that, not continue progressing towards, and people have seen this, I'm sure, remember Detroit? I mean, the policies of Detroit is what gave them bankruptcy. And they benefited by a state Supreme Court ruling that said the state of Wisconsin had to bail them out. Would we be so lucky? I don't know.
Thank you. Shanna?
I'd like to lift up what Mr. Marcot said, which we really did have a great negotiating process and like to restate my comment earlier that staff has done a great job keeping up with our discussion in that and providing clear documents. And given that, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article Seven, Section Four, and Article Seventeen, Section Five of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, Definitions, Article Three, Official Map, Article Four, Establishments of Districts, Article Ten, Conditional Uses, and Article Eleven, District Regulations for Amendments to Homeless Shelters. I would like to make a note to be consistent with these proposed changes, that the city council consider updating Chapter Twenty-two licensing requirements to have the school and daycare buffer be measured from property line to property line and to add parks to this list of buffers.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do we have to include any of the edits that we mentioned in our discussion tonight in that motion?
And I would like to make sure that the matrix is included. I think that is the primary one, as well as the changes to excluding-
RC.
Yes, RC.
Okay. All right.
And you accept those as the second?
Yeah, and, and you did mention Chapter Twenty-two, right?
Yes. Any further discussions? All right, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
Okay. Other business, reports from staff on recent minimus changes to seven Lexington and thirty-three Hillcrest.
I dealt with those mostly. The seven Lexington was a minor change. They were making a revision to the sidewalk, the curb against the parking area. That's out in the industrial zone, they weren't really expecting much, it's a cannabis cultivation, so they weren't expecting like, you know, it's not a retail, so they weren't expecting a lot of flow of traffic. The other one was thirty-three Hillcrest that they were adding antennas to the existing mobile cell network.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, now we're gonna go to the reading of the minutes. We have a number of them. Do we want to do them all at the same time or one at a time?
We do a straw poll. Did anyone have any amendments that would make them want to exclude?
I made a couple, I made one typo, Kristen Cludier's name was spelled, misspelled, and I think there was one other misspelling or-
Maple Avenue wasn't capped.
Correct, yeah, yeah, it was-
Grammatical, not substantive changes.
No, no substantive changes.
Did any member of the board see any concerns substantively?
No, I, I saw the Kristen Cludier one.
Right.
I kinda smiled when I saw the chair's email come back and-
There's no issues, I would-
So I, I don't think there's any issues.
All right, in that case, I will make a, I would entertain a motion to accept all of the minutes of September twenty-third, October twenty-first, November fourth, and November eighteenth. Do I have, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and motion to adjourn?
Also aye.
Okay.
Offered, seconded, whatever you-
Whatever you want, yeah, yeah. Fudge the names, the numbers, whatever.
Keep those matrix coming. Love a good, clear, simple. And happy holidays, yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, can you get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn, somebody say something.
I motioned!
Yeah.
You didn't see it?
No, I didn't.
I was too busy focusing on matrix.
Yeah, because it's a good-looking matrix. Listen, get yourself a nice table and then the whole world gets-
We want all the information on the table, that's what we're looking for.
For what?